Good evening, everybody. It is Wednesday, April 26, 2023 at 6:08 PM, and I'll call to order the Freetown Board of Selectmen meeting. This meeting will be available for in-person attendance and on Zoom. On March 29, 2023, Governor Haley signed into law Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March 31, 2025. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at the meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. This meeting of the Freetown Board of Selectmen will be conducted in person, as well via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found at the Town of Freetown's website, freetownmay.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner: downloading Zoom and entering the meeting ID below, calling the number listed below and entering the meeting ID listed below, or by going to the link and entering the meeting ID listed below. Although in-person attendance is available for this meeting, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website and YouTube channel an audio or video recording transcript and transcript, other, sorry, transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So with that, we are now in open session. So I can't actually see the room right now. When I talk, it's just me. So I apologize if there's any kind of miscommunication there. Is Selectmen votes here? I know I saw Jared.
No, he's coming. He'll be here in a little bit.
Okay. And just one thing I want to know. I have a hard stop today at 8:00 PM. I'm in Florida, and I have a pregnant wife who made a dinner reservation, and I have no wiggle room on this one. So just want to apologize for that ahead of time. Okay. So again, item one for Selectmen, we have executive session minutes from 4/18/2023. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve but not release the executive session minutes from 4/18/2023.
Motion made.
All seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. Next, we have the public entertainment on Sunday license request from St. John's Newman Parish for the Lakeside Festival on 5/28/2023. I know I'm not going to be the one to prevent Lakeside Festival. I don't know about you, Jared.
No, no.
So any additional discussion on this?
No, straightforward, Trevor. Thank you.
All right. I'm looking forward to it. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the public entertainment on Sunday license request from St. John's Newman Parish for Lakeside Festival on 5/28/2023.
Motion made.
All seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. Now I'll kick it over to Personnel.
Well, he's not here. Do you want to do it?
Oh, sorry. I'll do it.
Okay.
So this is the reappointment of Robert Koleveka as Veterans Agent Director and Veterans Grave Officer effective 5/1/2023 through 4/30/2024. Any discussion on this?
No.
All right. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve this reappointment.
Motion made.
All seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Okay. And then now, we have the combined meeting with the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. I'm assuming that the Finance Committee want to open their meeting?
Yes, having a quorum, I will open our Finance Committee meeting at 6:12.
Great. All right. So first up, it looks like we have Police Budget. Is the chief present?
I am.
Hello, Chief, how are you?
Good.
Okay. So I reviewed this. I like to hear the Finance Committee's take on it, but most of it looks like it's contractual based on, you know, the CBA. I don't know what the value really would be in kind of discussing any of that in depth, but I guess, is there any kind of specific line items that, you know, I guess Finance Committee would like to speak to, speak about on this?
I just had one very minor question.
A minor question? We'll take that.
Just really, you know, just so you can clarify. You have a number of officers that you're replacing in the coming year.
Yes.
I'm guessing they're retiring. And I just noticed that, you know, like, for instance, on the uniform allowance, it's still the full amount for those officers and then the full amount for the replacement officers is...
So what will happen is, on July 1st, under the collective bargaining agreement, the officers that will be retiring still get their clothing allowance. And then the replacement officers, when they're hired, also get a clothing allowance. So it's a double hit for each of those positions.
For that one year.
So I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the Selectmen because it appears to me that this particular board has recognized the importance of including the FICOM in all of these discussions. That hasn't always been true in the past. So, you know, so thank you for that. This is either my 25th or 26th time that I've appeared before the Finance Committee, and I can honestly say that I know it sounds kind of crazy, but I've always looked forward to meeting with the Finance Committee. They've always been respectful, and they've always supported public safety. So thank you for that. And these two gentlemen here, fiscally conservative, but they've always been respectful, and they were there when I first started about 25 years ago. And they've been kind and friendly, and I consider them my friends. So thank you. Well, they used to be my friend.
You could start with the increased other purchased services.
Let me see if I have that broken down.
I know what that is.
So yeah, can we turn Bob's mic on? I couldn't hear that. Thank you.
She had to turn your mic on. He couldn't hear you. You're good now.
I don't need a mic.
Chief, I believe that was the number that I requested you add to that for in case we need consulting services or transitioning services for you to come back and help work with the new chief. So that's a number that we put in there for, if we need it, for that, for those services.
Isn't that what the reserve fund is if you need extra funds other than this budget?
So we're anticipating the process in selecting the successor chief and lieutenant has taken a lot longer than we anticipated, and it's still not completely finalized. So we're going down to the wire here, and we're going to have these successor positions without any, I should say, without sufficient training, et cetera. So this money represents paying somebody to come in and acclimate them to the new budgeting process, the firearms process, the, you know, vehicle leasing, you know, all of those different elements.
Would that be you, then?
Well, if that's the inclination of the Board of Selectmen, I would think that would be the person, yeah.
That's been our anticipation to Debbie's point all along has been that we were hopeful that there would be more overlap, that the new chief would have the training from someone with all the experience of current chief. So if that can't happen, then we need to do something about trying to make it happen after the fact.
Actually, I'm just a little confused. The, your successor is part of this department, is he not?
He is. Well, that is still being determined by the Board of Selectmen. That person, to my understanding, has not entered into an agreement with the Board of Selectmen as of this time. So that's still being worked out. And because that person has not yet been chosen, no training, no overlap or anything has been provided.
So is it, you know, forgive my ignorance, but is the, is it an assistant chief? Is that...
I don't have an assistant chief, Bob.
Okay. But is the person, is the person that's going to take your place that's been part of this department? Has he been in the department for two years, five years?
Oh, he's, it's, I believe it'll be Sergeant Rose, but, you know, again, that's contingent upon an agreement being entered with the Board of Selectmen. Yeah, he's served many years, but he has not served in the chief's capacity or the lieutenant's capacity.
So you're talking about an administrative problem here?
An administrative issue, yes.
Okay.
Right. A training issue, yeah.
Okay. So he's got to be brought up, whoever it is is got to be brought up.
That's absolutely correct, yeah.
Okay. And I also think it's worth mentioning that whoever it is, at the end of the day, if it is who we all say it's, or think it's going to be, they can't be pulled away from their current job, right? So there's...
Well, that's the other challenge, right? He's fulfilling a patrol supervisor's job, and to try to pull him out of that means we're going to run short on patrol in terms of manpower and in terms of supervision. We may have to pay overtime to fill those shifts. So it's, there's, you know, multiple dimensions to this.
I actually think... Go ahead, Trevor, please. Sorry.
Yeah, so currently still, he's, you know, covered under the CBA. So it's not like we can have him do additional work on top of that without another agreement. So it's hard to have this overlap, which makes total sense in the real world, but when we have all these different kinds of contracts, it gets complicated.
And this was my request, just so, you know, I requested that this get put in the budget so that we can have this transition period and keep things as seamless as possible in the police department because we cannot do, based on the CBA and the contracts, we cannot do the training prior to the retirement of the current chief. So this was the only way, or at least the way I felt, that we would still have a seamless transition, but we'd be bringing back the chief on a per diem consulting basis. And I'm not sure exactly what that looks like at this point in time in terms of hours and longevity. It won't be super long, but sometime, we've talked a little bit about it, but we don't have a concrete picture yet of what that looks like.
So is it, is it a problem with the contract that the reason that we haven't...
So one of the issues under 150E is if you have somebody in the bargaining unit, let's say it's a sergeant, and their job's description is delineated, as in the case of our department, and now you're going to unilaterally have that person perform duties and responsibilities outside of that bargaining unit, then you run into potential violations, unfair labor violations under 150E.
Okay. So what is an administrative problem? Well, that certainly answers that question. So the increase from 2.4 or 2.5 million is pretty much contractual.
Yeah, that's accurate. So when you look at, I'm sure, many of these other budgets, your personnel are probably in the 90th percentile.
92.
And what drives that? You've answered that. The collective bargain agreement. We've got the Selectmen, they negotiate, you know, 2%, 3%, whatever, wages, maybe stipends, other benefits, and then that drives the numbers in most of those personnel categories.
So a question was asked of me, which I didn't have the answer for, is what's the actual cost of, you know, a policeman, a fireman, you know, adding in all the benefits and health insurance?
Oh, jeez. Well, I can't speak to health insurance and retirement, et cetera, but generally speaking, we've got our base pay, right? And then depending on college, what type of college degree, you could add anything from zero up to 25%. And then, of course, if you're working a four-to-midnight shift, there's a differential that's added, or a midnight shift, there's a differential that's added. So, yeah, those are the...
I understand, but, you know, just a raw number. And I just, I think it's, at this particular juncture, it would be difficult to come up with that number because everybody's different. Everybody doesn't have the same educational level.
Right.
Everybody doesn't work the same shift, and some people work more overtime than other people. I mean, that was the question. That was my answer.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I think it would be very difficult. As a broad range, you could just look at these numbers here and say, okay, it's a million one or, you know, whatever that number is, and you divide it by the number. But that's really, it's really not, that's not the number.
No, it isn't. It isn't.
You know, you've got your patrolmen, you've got your sergeants, you've got your lieutenants.
Right. And as you said, all with their respective degrees or not, not having degrees, different shifts, you know, all of those things, yeah.
There was a bump in gross overtime, actually, too. Was that, is that like the normal? I've noticed, I know three years ago, four years ago, there was a tremendous bump in overtime, and then we kind of leveled off for three years.
So we're facing a big challenge because what police reform did to us is basically wiped out all of our part-time employees. We had approximately, our part-time employees fulfilled approximately three to four full-time equivalents with all the hours they worked. Well, police reform, we don't have that. So how do we make up for that? All of those shifts that had been filled by those part-time people, we either going to run short, or we're trying to fill them. And when we fill them now, it's at a cost of overtime. Instead of, you know, the $19 an hour, we're looking at, I think, average overtime is probably somewhere around $56 an hour.
Yeah. So what was the reason that the part-timers? Was that a mandate, a statement?
Yeah. So under police reform, the peace officers and Standards Training Committee was formed, and they promulgated standards for certification. And basically, you have to have attended a full-time police academy and have certain number of hours worked, et cetera. Well, our part-time officers had attended a part-time reserve academy, so they didn't meet those qualifications.
All right. But you do...
I'm not saying there was any, I mean, it hurt us, but...
So in the future, is it a possibility to get people that qualify to be part-time?
So the answer is yes. But keep in mind, if I'm a certified police officer, why would I look for a part-time job when I could most likely get, have better inroads to a full-time position? So that'll be the challenge, yes.
Yeah, okay. And this was a state mandate, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not speaking to the wisdom of it, you know?
I do. You stop talking mandates, everybody gets nervous.
Are we okay with police? All right. What about communication? Did we have any questions on that one? Should be number 215, Bob.
Huh?
215.
Yeah, I know. I got nothing in there. It's in this conglomerate of crap here. I think I got one of those right here. I was looking at specifics. I lost my head. I don't think so.
Carlton, could you tell me where we're standing with dispatchers right now? Do you have a full complement or...
So we are, we're down, I believe it's one or two full-time positions. We have a number of people in the pipeline that we've interviewed. We've got some part-time people that are helping with the shortfall. But it's always been a challenge to keep adequately staffed, an adequately staffed dispatch center. Over the course of my employment, it's always, we've always run short or... But we're moving, we're moving in the right direction.
I think I saw you just, I think I saw two new ones appointed.
So we have Dean, who's training now, that should be ready shortly. And then we have Alyssa, who will be a full-time person. But right now, she's going to be part-time while she's picking up some online training and preparation.
Is fuel a separate budget now?
It is, yes.
Outside of...
Yes, yes.
Who's in charge of that?
Well, I, the person that is responsible for ordering fuel and, you know...
Who would that person be?
That would be me.
Well, does anyone have any questions on communications? Because then we can move, Bob, do you want to move to townwide fueling?
There you go.
Did you want to, did you have a question on communications, or do you want to move to fueling?
No, no. I don't have any more for communication.
Okay. Then we can look at townwide fueling, 950.
Okay. So with respect to the townwide fueling, Margaret had approached me a while ago and said, can we look at this again? You know, it would appear that we have more than we need right now. So then I spoke with the administrator about that. We took a look at it, and we ended up... The first step in our analysis is we looked at FY23's monthly average cost. So that was approximately $10,384.49. We multiplied that by 12 months, and that gave us 124,61028. And then we used a 15% increase to that figure, and that gave us 143,30182. And you will see that reflected in that particular line item, gasoline and diesel. The other line items represent maintenance and insurance, but the main thing is the 143,30182. And I think we used a 15%, Deb, because was it the schools had completed some research, and they arrived at a projected potential 15% increase. So that's...
This is kind of off-subject, but not really. Have we ever looked at entering an agreement for a year-long contract to fix the cost of the school?
I was thinking the same exact thing, Jared.
We do that with work.
This is piggybacked on a bid. We're just piggybacking. I think it might be the school bid. But to your direct question, I'm not aware of, you know, any previous administration looking at that particular...
And at the end of the day, it is what it is, right? But I think if we knew we could give, it would be a lot easier for you to come up with a figure or your successor, right? So I think if we knew it was going to be $2 a gallon for the year, we'd be able to come up with a number a lot easier and not show fluctuations much. So just a thought.
Yeah, and Jared and I both work in this space. So I think, you know, we both understand, like, I know a lot of municipalities, you know, from my former clients, who, this is what they do. They lock in a contract for the year. It can go either way, right? You can, if fuel prices drop immensely, then you're holding the bag. But generally, you know, especially in the way it's gone recently, you know, it can be definitely an easier way to plan and can save a lot of money that way.
Yeah, because, I mean, I think, I think back to last year when we had a lot of uncertainty last year at this time when we were talking about fuel prices. And I remember we were all going back and forth thinking that fuel was going to hit $10 a gallon, right? Because it was just skyrocketing last year at this point. So knock on wood.
I mean, that approach makes a lot of sense. You know, there's something to be said about, you know, predictability and planning and fixed figures. Absolutely.
Yeah. And what happens is, you know, usually, the company will go and enter into options or futures on your behalf to hedge that position so that, you know, they're also, you know, they're locking in their margin as well, I guess. So it makes sense.
Something, I mean, it's something we can look at down the road. We're not going to solve that today for this year's budget, but it's something...
Yeah. I don't know if the contracts are big enough for them to entertain it, but it's definitely worth looking into.
Is it true that whatever is used in the lineup goes back into the general fund?
That's correct, yes.
Actually, really, if you're over, if you're over by 10% or 15%, it's not, it's not lost money. It goes back into the general fund.
Yeah, it's not lost money. I guess I was just thinking...
My opinion is you want that buffer. You want that just in case things do get out of control.
Mm-hmm. No, and I appreciate doing the 15% over the top when we don't know the number, right? But I'm saying, if we could know the number and fix the number, then we wouldn't have to worry about that. But that's, it's something important, you know?
I can't see why that's even possible.
Oh, yeah, no, because people lock into contracts.
Oh, I'm sure they lock into contracts. But I mean, to actually predict that number, I think that's, I mean, you really put yourself out there. I mean, one wrong thing, you know? It's like OPEC just decided to cut production by a billion barrels. I mean, you don't know when those people are going to do that kind of stuff. And it's going to roll down to us at some particular point. But then it's not going to take a year to get here. It's going to take a month to get here. I mean, you're going to see prices go back up. What the price is going back up? Maybe it's $0.05, $0.10, I don't know. It could be $1, it could be $2. And all of a sudden, that $2.58 a gallon is $3.58 or $4.58, and that becomes a problem. Now you got to come back to, you know? We always have a buffer with us. We've got enough, 135, I think, this year. So if there was a problem with $10,000 or even $20,000 or $30,000, it wouldn't be a problem. That money's already allocated.
Absolutely.
You know, I'd still be more comfortable with a buffer, a bigger buffer, to be honest with you. That's just my opinion.
And I appreciate it.
So the other thing to also consider is, you know, the fuel for plows. We've had some light winters, you know what I mean? So that also has an impact as well. But after talking with Deb, I'm, you know, I have a high level of confidence that this, this is a, this is a good number, Bob.
Yeah. Again, like I said, you know, you guys picked a number. I mean, there's nobody here that can predict what's going to happen six months from now.
Well, that's absolutely right, yes.
With fuel. And I was just, you know, I would prefer to have a buffer. If it isn't used, that's fine. It goes back into the general fund. But, you know, if it's there, I mean, if we need it, it's there. If it's a good number and everybody likes it, wonderful.
I'm okay with it.
I'm comfortable with the number.
Me as well.
All right. Any more with any other questions for Chief Abbott? You are done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Chief.
Thank you.
You will be missed.
Yeah.
You probably won't miss this portion of it. He just said he actually enjoys it, so...
Oh, does he?
Yeah.
Not the Selectmen part, the Finance Committee part.
All right.
Yeah, you're right. He did specifically say that, Bob. I must agree with you. All right. So next up, are we going to do fire?
Yeah.
I don't think there is a hazard.
Welcome, welcome, Chief.
No.
Let's take that, scratch the hazard map budget off your list. Just fire and civil... Fire is 220.
I got it.
Anybody want to kick this off with specific questions or...
Yeah. Actually, I have a question for the chief. How much did the fire department roll back into the town with ambulance fees last year?
I have that number for you. FY22, total income with ambulance fees...
FY twenty-two, total income with ambulance fees, all our permit fees was nine hundred six thousand seven hundred and seven dollars.
So that was general fund?
That goes back into the general fund, yes. I believe the actual ambulance receipts was seven oh seven. Over seven hundred thousand.
Yeah.
I had seven seventy.
Seven seventy, well, I knew there were sevens.
Yeah, I think I probably asked that question or you provided that information, I have seven seventy.
Say again?
She was saying that either he provided the information or she had asked him, so she had the number.
Yeah, seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars for just the ambulance.
I, I anticipated, because of my request, I was going to have a lot of questions. So because my memory is not as good as Chief Abbott's, I made notes. So I made some handouts here of my talking points when these questions come up, so.
We appreciate any light reading you may.
Handout and now.
Thanks, sir.
Questions, I'll explain with our names. Yeah, I think we probably have that.
I did. Yeah, I think we have, do you have a next?
Oh, I have one.
Oh, okay.
I have one.
So Chief, I guess let's, you know, I think a big item here, obviously, is the two new potential positions.
Yes.
Can we just speak to that, you know, and maybe explain to, to the town, you know, why those are required?
Okay. And a lot of people aren't aware of how the fire department's staffed and how it operates. They just know that they call nine one, nine one one and we, we show up. Currently, the fire department has two firefighter paramedics at station three around the corner, here, Bullock Road. Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. That is seventy, as it says here in my talking points, and I'm sorry, Trevor, you don't have this, but seventy percent of our work week, my staffing level is two. Thirty hours of the week, I have five people on duty. That discounts, this includes the deputy chief who works Monday to Thursday generally. He flexes around a little bit on, on the weekdays as, as we need him, but. So I have five people for basically Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday during the day. On Mondays, I have four. I have one firefighter paramedic at station two. And on Fridays, I have three, none of this counts me, but I have three people on Fridays, because I also have a ten-hour day shift paramedic at station two. So my proposal of adding two firefighters, I would move my two daytime firefighter paramedics to a twenty-four hour rotation. I would put the two new firefighter paramedics on a twenty-four hour rotation. That gives me three people at station three twenty-four seven. Where in the process of an addition, expansion and renovation of station three, I would move the second ambulance, which is at station two right now, to the center of town. What this does, right now, seventy percent of the time, seventy percent of the week, and here's my, my STEMI specialist here, seventy percent of the time, when that ambulance leaves, that's nights and weekends, the ambulance leaves, goes on a call for an hour and a half, roughly, for the average call, there's nobody in the fire station. Everybody has to come from home if there's a second call. So I, and again, I don't, some of the townspeople, I'm sure, don't realize this, but some do. So now people are going from home, they go to station two to pick up the second ambulance. If the call's in a sonnet, I have people in a sonnet going to pick up the squad that has the medical stuff on it, defibrillator, cardiac monitor, some fresh line medications. So that's, that's all a delay. So at least if I have three, and I don't, I don't need to hire two more firefighter paramedics, I'll make that clear. I need to hire six. But that's, that's not in the, that's, that's not possible. The town, the town can't deal with that right now. So my proposal is that if we can hire two, that gets us to three people, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I always, I shouldn't say always, because we do have the serious calls, you have to have three people on the truck. Sometimes you need four people on the truck. Majority of the time, I'm going to be able to have that third person come back and staff the second ambulance. So if I have another medical call, which happens quite often, at least the truck's going out the door with a paramedic on it and somebody can come from home and meet him at the scene. So it's, it's preventing that eight to ten minute delay just to get to go and get the truck out the door. So I, there's, there's some more notes here. In two thousand and nineteen is the last time we added any staffing. We added the two daytime firefighters, the two forty-hour week positions to the staff station two during the week. At that time, Rescue Three, which is the ambulance that's parked at station three, that's, that's located there, responded to eight hundred and sixty-nine calls. Not all of them are transport, but it responded to eight hundred and sixty-nine calls. That includes medicals and motor vehicle accidents. At that time, the backup ambulance, which is at station two, responded to three hundred and twenty-three. Ambulance income from billing at that time was, as you see here, four hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred and four dollars. We went through the, the COVID era that everybody called us for everything, but nobody wanted to be transported, that COVID kind of misconstrued all the numbers there a little bit, but we fast forward to FY twenty-two. The rescue, the ambulance that did eight hundred and sixty-nine calls is now up to a thousand last year. And the second truck is up another, low of another hundred, hundred and sixteen, I guess. And our ambulance income was up to seven hundred seventy-six oh seven, as Deb said earlier. When I prepared this, it was, we were at the calendar year mark. At that point, this year, Rescue Three had already done six hundred calls. So, I mean, we're projected to do like twelve hundred calls with that primary truck this year. We're just, we're getting busier and busier. I would say, because of the, the new billing company and our ambulance bills are lagging like three months behind because they sent out three bills, I don't have the real number for what we've collected so far, but I would estimate we're going to be way over eight hundred thousand for ambulance receipts in the fiscal year we end once, once all is said and done. So the, the nuts of the whole thing is fifty-four percent of our calls we're doing, when I only have two guys in, in the building, when you, when you run the stats and the numbers of what we're doing for nights and weekends, and fifty-four percent of our calls are during that seventy percent of the week. So I think.
That makes sense to me.
It's, it's time.
I mean, yeah.
I mean, the, the MBTA thing is, is, I've sat down with Lakeville and other communities, they have train stations and that's, I think everybody in the room knows that's going to be a mess. There's, there's some notes here that I put down for the train station and, and all that goes along with that. I did, I did find it interesting that over half of all train accidents happen at crossings. And I was sitting there after supper last night, counting, and we have eleven railroad crossings in Freetown. So eleven places that the railroad tracks across the road. And I'm like, wow, that seems like a lot. And then I sat down with Google Maps and New Bedford only has three. Far River has one, Berkeley has two, and Lakeville has two. So we have, we have a lot of opportunity for, for issues there. And lastly, I, I've included on the back here, there's a, there's a staffing study that was done by Chief O'Brien in Lakeville. And it just gives you some some towns comparable to our population, what they have for, what they have for staffing groups per shift. The EMS group size would be how many people they have per shift. So I guess the, the combination departments in the, in the population would probably be the, the key thing to, to focus on there. But as you can see, we're, we're down in the bottom of the, as far as staffing levels, we're, we're down on the the bottom of the ratio there.
Chief, I got a question for you.
I'm glad to answer any questions on that. I, I think, I, I think we need to plan to try to get to four people at that station, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So both your ambulances have two paramedics with it all the time. The other safety factor, from a firefighting standpoint, a fire engine with three people on it gets an awful lot more work done than one with two. And I, and I realize eighty-five percent of what we do is EMS work, but when the fires come, that's
Big.
Very, very important. So again, I'm glad that, that's, that's my dog and pony show, but I'm glad to entertain any questions.
Chief, I, I appreciate that, thank you very much. And I just kind of add to that, you know, a while back, Mark Rogan, you know, he, him and I were talking and he asked me, you know, how many firefighters do you think are on staff at any given time? And I, and I remember at the time, I guess, like, I don't know, six or eight, that's what I, that's what I figured. And when he told me it was two, I was, I was very surprised, you know? So I, I guess I'm not surprised that you're looking for this kind of increase in staffing. I think it, it makes sense to me. I'm not sure if anyone else has any questions or concerns.
Chief, you, you're looking at your numbers for your staffing and your calls. You're averaging, you know, twelve to fourteen hundred per year between both, both trucks. Are those all Freetown or are we?
We, we do. Depends on the year, Carlos, but I would say probably close to, I want to say a hundred mutual aid calls with the ambulance a year. Majority of that is going to be to New Bedford. Because their systems, I'm, I'm going to be kind, we go to New Bedford a lot. And I've talked, I've talked to Deb about this and I have, obviously, Freetown is, is priority one. There are times that we tell New Bedford, no, we, we can't send you an ambulance. For example, today, I, I sent, the newest ambulance went out for an oil change dispatch. New Bedford only have one ambulance, you, you can't have it today. The flip side of that is there is income generated through the billing on those calls, so it's not, it's not a loss. And, and the, the mutual aid with our sister communities of Rochester and Berkeley and Lakeville, those are, those are back and forth, those, those work out to fifty-fifty. They help us, we help them, it's, it's a different circumstance, but there is, and this has been, the New Bedford, mutual aid to New Bedford thing's been going on for, I don't know, twenty, over twenty years, twenty-five years probably. And I don't, I know there are some communities that have, that have shut them off, have stopped it, but from, from somebody that's worked in public safety as long as I have, there's somebody on the other end of the phone that's calling nine one one for an emergency and somebody needs to help them. So to, to say no because you're in New Bedford, and again, Freetown becomes number one, but that.
As long as you're capturing, you know, the mutual aid numbers and, and the funds that come with it, you know.
Right, there is, there is income from that.
And that, that was something you already kind of alluded to, but having a second ambulance will help us to not have to call mutual aid as much into town, right? So we'll capture those dollars back as well. So yes, we're going to spend more, but we'll make a little bit more. I'm not saying we're going to make it back a hundred percent, it's never a profit center, but we will capture some.
But that, again, that number gets bigger every year and helps.
You're right, I, I think once the MTA establishes itself down the road, yeah, you're, you're more than likely, your calls are going up for the things you've listed here, from overdoses to fires to road accidents, so. Here, Chief.
How many calls in New Bedford do you get?
I, I think sometimes it depends on their staffing levels, I guess, Judge. And I've had, they just have a, they have a whole new set of directors running EMS in New Bedford now, so I'm, I'm hoping it gets, I'm hoping it improves. Sometimes we go two or three times a day and then we don't go for a week. So I'm, I'm going to guess it's probably eighty to a hundred calls a year. We, we go to New Bedford for mutual aid with medicals.
Couple a week?
Probably, probably. Yeah, some, sometimes it's depending on the, on the staffing, if they're, they're down on the ambulance that broke. They had, they had at one point, I think they had two ambulances with blow motors. They only had two in the whole city and they were calling everybody all the time for, for mutual aid, so. What's that?
Does that leave us uncovered when you're?
No, no, it doesn't, because I, I won't send, I won't send them both. If, if I only have one for Freetown, I, I won't, I won't send it.
Are you okay with fire?
Actually, I just have one other question.
Sure.
I haven't got any, I thought that I saw a request for eight two thousand dollars.
I'm sorry.
I, I thought that I saw, I may be wrong, but I thought that I saw a request for eight two thousand dollars for a new vehicle for you.
Seventy-eight thousand, yes.
Or whatever, okay. And that's, your, your old vehicle is going to go to the assistant chief?
Yes, I want to get the old, the old SUV.
What is, what is he driving now?
He drives his personal vehicle.
Really?
Well, he drives it, the deputy chief responds to calls twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. He works forty hour, works a forty hour work week during the day. He's driving, he's driving a department pickup truck.
Okay.
He's our fire prevention guy, he's out doing inspections all day. So then the rest of the week, nights and the, the rest of his time off, he's driving his personal vehicle. He goes to, he responds to almost every call in the town. In his personal vehicle, I did it for five years as the deputy chief. He's driving his personal vehicle, he's parking it on the side of the highway with a little flashy light on the dash or it, it shouldn't be. He, he should have a town vehicle, he has a lot of responsibility, he should have a town vehicle.
When he responds through every call, does that mean an ambulance call also?
Second ambulance calls, not toned calls, just, just to be clear. Any call that helped, the, the call people that call back or the, anytime that we have a tone call, motor vehicle accident, second medicals, fire alarms, anything that helps call in for, he responds to. And you, you can attest to how often the guy, any hour of the day.
He bothers his neighbors, he should, he should really be more considerate to his neighbors.
Any hour of the day.
Yeah, he does, he, he's up in, he moves around all, all hours of the night.
There's nobody more dedicated than that and.
And I would think it would make him, it would be beneficial too for what can be kept in the vehicle versus having a bag that they're keeping in their personal vehicle, right? Having more, more equipment with them in that SUV is going, you know, be helpful, so.
So he's driving a pickup truck, so he only got that backseat for any spare bags or equipment, things like that. So it's, it's, it's a small pickup, so it's, it's short. I'm assuming the vehicle's going to be all, all the colors on it and every bells and whistles you need for, right?
Well, it's, it's actually, I'm, I've, I've done some research on that and a pickup truck actually is less money than an SUV off, on the state bid list right now. And the clean cab concept, I don't know if you're familiar with that, that's all, that's the way that the fire service is going. the fire service is going because of carcinogens and our turnout gear and our airbags and all that. So we're trying to trying to keep all the dirty, sooty stuff after calls out of where we're living. So a pickup truck with a cap on it actually gets that stuff in the, in the back of the truck. So the, I mean, the pickup truck itself's probably on the state bid list, $35,000. The rest of it's the equipment you need, your mobile command post and your radios and lights and dry erase boards and accountability systems and all that that goes along with, with the chase vehicle. And that's, again, that, I don't know, it may take a year to get, you know, the way that supplies.
My question is, yeah, how long?
I think we're still waiting for the vehicle for the highway department.
Right, so, right. And that's just simply a pickup truck with a snowplow on it.
Anyone else with fire?
No.
Okay. Were there any questions on civil defense?
291.
291.
Yeah, I don't think I have civil defense.
Yeah, 291.
291?
Yeah. So Lola sent me PDF copies of all these. I'm traveling, so I don't have the binder with me.
All right, yeah.
But I, unless it's in the fire, so, but I can review that later on and follow up with any questions if I can say come up.
Yeah, there's, there's really not much to it, so.
Chief, do you anticipate for civil defense, I'm assuming this covers the drills and some of the trainings you guys do, right? As far as the civil defense budget, does it include all the trainings and like you do for like, whether it's the lake or the MBTA? I know you have a training coming up in this summer.
That is.
Did that come out of this?
No. No, that will all come out of my fire department training budget. Basically, the only thing that's salary wise that's funded out of that is the the Emergency Management Director's salary.
$6200?
I do need to sit down with the selectmen and discuss that at some point as well, but I've I, I have a, let's just emergency management, I have a very, I'll readily admit I have a very large learning curve that I'm cramming right now. I've been taking a bunch of classes up at MEMA for EOC and how that all integrates with incident command and some other things that I once we get through budgets and some other things, that emergency management is something I really like to work on getting re-motivated and reorganized and take a bigger role in some of the things that we do. Because there's, there's a lot of there's a lot of things that fall under emergency management that we just do at the fire department level. And especially with the sheltering, training, that's, that's another thing that I just talked to Lisa about that. That's another thing that's kind of faded away that I'd like to get rejuvenated and back to up and running. And so there's, there's an awful lot that falls on EMA that the fire department has just absorbed and Chief Sylvia has just done. So it's, there's, there's a lot there and as far as the, the equipment goes, that's, I use some of that for some of the the, some of the grants that we have that have matching funds. I'm able to use some of that, some of the FEMA grants and the EMA grants, equipment grants and whatnot. I may be able to use that equipment money there to when we have the matching funds to come up and the sheltering supplies, you know, the stuff expires and so again, that's, it's not a huge budget, but it has a lot of, there's a lot of responsibility really that falls under that, but most of the training and whatnot.
And the town gunner grant for working on a hazard mitigation plan. So that's something that, you know, we've talked about and that Victoria from planning will be putting together a group to really start working on a hazard mitigation plan that these, you know, so that we're all on the same page and we understand our roles and responsibilities if in fact there is an emergency such as 2010 when the roads got flooded and whatnot. So I think we're in it, we're moving forward trying to put together things that were in place maybe prior, but have sort of fallen by the wayside.
I do have the the SEP Community Emergency Response Plan. I've updated that with all the new players and I've changed, there's some infrastructure changes. I've updated all that and I'm open. We have our department head meeting next month. Bring that with me and maybe get a few autographs on that so we can.
I prefer.
We have a new regional director with MEMA for Crystal County and he's, he's a young guy. He's very energetic, but I've made that contact and he's, he's a good resource to have, so that's that's been positive.
One question, the EMA part-time salaries wages went from 2,700 to 6,200.
Yep.
Okay. Was that contractual?
No. That, that, the Emergency Management Director's pay rate is set by the board of selectmen just like all the other non-contractual pay rates are set. I have a I have a study that I've done for the surrounding communities for those salary rates. And again, I believe in June, they're going to in June is when you generally adjust pay rates. And I got some other things to call firefighters that I need to talk about, but so I, I put that money in there anticipating that I didn't want to not put it in there and then negotiate a higher rate and then not have the money for it. So that's, that's why that number's increased.
The $16,500 EMA other supplies, is that to refurbish the supplies that go out of date?
Yes.
And expire?
There's, there's.
You're talking about provisional supplies.
Yes, there's sheltering supplies that that kind of stuff expires by. And I do use some of that money for matching funds with grants.
No. Okay. That's all I got.
Anyone else?
See, not too bad.
Thank you, Chief.
Painless.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, folks.
Appreciate it.
And again, anybody, especially Trevor, anybody that, I know there were a lot of questions floating around when I made this proposal for staffing. Call me. Come sit down in my office and I'm very transparent. If there's questions asked me, you know, I'll be more than glad to explain where I'm coming from.
So.
I'm probably going to be back.
We hear you. We hear you, Chief.
Okay. Moving on. Animal control next on the agenda here.
How you doing?
Good.
So Deb, is this one of the exceptions, 4.1%?
This, you mean the raise?
Yeah.
Yeah, the animal control officer did not get a raise in the prior year. So this is actually two years worth of a raise. She didn't get a raise in fiscal year 23. Because we just, we didn't, we didn't have backup paperwork.
As per our conversation last night, I just thought I'd throw that in there.
You just wanted to give me a dig, didn't you? Okay with it.
We haven't talked about your increase yet.
I think it just got bigger. I don't think you're one of us to talk to.
Actually, the assistant salary wages went from $250 to $1,000.
So, is that a question?
Question, yes.
I don't have an assistant. I don't have an assistant.
It says ACO assistant salaries wage.
I know what it says. I don't have an assistant.
So that $1,000 is?
So we're asking to increase that 250 so that I can get somebody, hopefully, to be on call if I'm away. As of right now, if I take a vacation or.
But you don't have anybody.
I don't have anybody. So when I go on vacation, I'm not on vacation. I'm working still.
Any mutual aid, Lisa, from like Lakeville or?
So David Freitz, the animal control officer for Lakeville, will come over and help me out for any emergencies, which would be an arrest and there's a dog in the car. A dog that got hit that no owner is present for. Trying to think of something else that might, there's a whole list in dispatch. But he's 70. He's having some health issues. He doesn't get paid. He does it out of the goodness of his heart for me to cover if I need to go away or something like that. The day-to-day things, the phone's always with me. The database is always with me. So I just feel like I should have somebody that if I'm out of town, can come on an emergency and handle that.
Lisa, that makes a lot of sense to me. One question would be, so like, how, I guess, just how would that communication work? Would they call, if you say you're on vacation, would it, would, would it automatically get, you know, dispatch would contact them or would it go through you still? Just, just logistically, I'm just curious how that would work.
Ideally, yes. Dispatch has a list of what are considered emergencies. And so when they call into the police department, they would be able to dispatch that person based on that protocol.
We don't have any, we don't have any reciprocal agreements with any of the towns around us or anything like that? Nothing. Didn't we at one time, well, I know at one time we had a, an agreement with Lakeville.
When I first yeah, before I was, was hired in the position Lakeville covered here. When I first started, there was a gentleman called Jared who came that's where that ACO assistant budget came from. He would come out and get a paid stipend per call he went on. And I think at the time was $30 or $35 or something. I can tell you I wouldn't go out for 30 bucks.
No, not the.
I just like, you know.
Lisa, this might be a silly question too, but is there any kind of certificate, like a specific certification that this person would need?
Yes. Anybody that works in the animal control capacity has to go through the animal control academy and then have to do continuing education every year. We have a certain amount that we have to. It's weird talking to you because I can't see you.
I'm sorry.
We have a certain amount of continuing education that we have to do every year.
Okay. Yeah, and the reason why I ask, I'm thinking like, you know, if we can't find somebody, right? I see the $50 per call statement that you're proposing here and that makes sense, but you know, if we can't find somebody, if we can find somebody who is willing to get trained, you know, what kind of cost are we talking about? To set this kind of, to set somebody up to be in that position? I guess like, do you know like, what, what it costs to get that certification and, you know, obviously if you add stuff, things of that nature?
I don't know what the cost is for the academy now. When I went, which was quite a while ago, it was $400. It was twice a week for 10 weeks. But depending on who we get, they may already be certified.
That, that's the, that's the best case scenario, right?
Right.
Yeah, we would lean towards that, I would guess, right? And then if we needed to, then we can go back and try and allocate some funding and know the source at that point, so. I think.
I know. It's hard to say, really. I, 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 I don't know. Off the top of my head, I don't know. I'd have to go back and look. Some of them come in through the police department. Most of them go directly to the animal control phone. But I get Facebook messages. I get comments with questions, messenger questions.
I understand. I'm just, I'm just curious.
Off the top of my head, I, I honestly don't know.
Okay, that's fine. No problem. The only other question I have is you went, postage went from $60 to $650. My question is.
Postage. So I added, I think I had to fill out a form for that as well. So with the advent of technology, which is my nemesis, the town clerk and I I don't want to say this. So previously, the town clerk handled a lot of the stuff that animal control can take care of because citations is basically it comes down to citations.
Administrative work.
Administratively. So now I'm going to be responsible for actually sending out the end of the year citations for non-licensed dogs, non-rabies vaccinated dogs. So that requires postage.
Okay.
Yeah, and this used to be in the clerk's budget. It just kind of got moved to her budget because she'll be be responsible.
Yeah, there was another move in the clerk's budget. We can talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't have anything else myself pushing.
Lisa, how's the, how's the, the new digs over at the transfer station?
We're just about there. I had a printer delivered yesterday. Trying to figure that out. I'm not, I'm a little technologically challenged. But I'm getting there.
Are you keeping office hours? Like what's?
Yes and no. Yes, like I'm there. I try to pop in almost every day that the transfer station is open, but I know on one day Deb came down to see the new office and the desk had been delivered and all that. And I wasn't there and she asked me, you know, what was going on? Well, I did seven kennel inspections that day. So I'm not, tomorrow I have three, you know, so technically I'm in the office, but I have to be out at residences to do those kennel inspections so they can get their licensing done. I've got to do the barn inspections, things like that. So I try, I'm trying to be there. I, I will say it has definitely helped rather than being out of my house or out of the truck because it gives me a dedicated, I'm thinking about and I got to get something done, I can do it. But I, I can't, there's no way for me to sit there for eight hours or six hours a day. The phone's ringing all the time. I get to run out and get a dog or I have to go do an inspection or something like that.
Do the residents know you're there? I'm asking.
That's a pretty busy place down there. So, you know, and Vicki's kind of like the mayor. So, yeah, they, they pretty much, they know they're waving as they go by and.
Only reason I ask is like, do you maintain supplies there? Any applications or materials so that residents do stop by, they can grab a brochure or something like, here, this is the service we provide?
Actually, there, there will be, yes. And I've been talking to the nurse, our town nurse, Laurie, who I didn't realize, but she has a lot of information I saw at the rabies clinic with it for like tick-borne diseases and, you know, how to take care of ticks and so things like that. I'm going next, next month to a coyote seminar. Teaching the public how to live with coyotes. We are inundated in Freetown. I mean, we live in the forest, you know? So I have materials for that. So that's the plan is to have that kind of information available for, for residents.
Yeah, I can see them, once they realize you're there, more people probably stop by and say hello and ask them the other questions.
One of the windows slides this way and they come right in like I'm at McDonald's, you know, hey. So, but it's been good.
Bring some fries. Ask for their own fries with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have anything else. Everything else, those, you know.
Yeah, I don't ask for much.
All right, Lisa, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we all good?
Are we all set? Awesome. Thank you, Lisa.
And then I think finally we have for tonight is building.
Come on down.
Come on down.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening, Carl. Welcome to your first finance committee meeting in Town Free Town.
Glad to be here. Thank you.
Let's start with public buildings and properties, one ninety-two?
Yeah, one ninety-two.
One ninety-two is the big one.
All right.
One ninety-two, bud.
See what you're asking for, Carl. Tom, you sure doing it real quick?
This town property custodial salaries and wages forty-two thousand, eighty-sixty-nine. Is that one person or is that a person in the apartment?
That's one person.
And what does he do? Is he full-time?
He's full-time, takes care of all the town buildings from maintenance-wise. He does some small jobs requiring carpentry or something like that.
I mean, by all the other buildings, does he take care of the fire station and the police station?
The police station, only, they have a maintenance person that comes in on a regular schedule. He takes care of everything outside the building, grounds, properties and things like that.
Cutting the grass and all that stuff?
Highway department does the grass, but he'll do the weed killing and some of the weeding as needed.
Shoveling snow as well, things like that.
So he helps, they have a person that does the police station on a regular basis, but she doesn't do the outside grounds or any of the heavier lifting stuff in the department. We got work orders from other staff, so putting up shelves and moving furniture, things like that. He would also be doing that.
Yeah, nothing's jumping out at me as being kind of crazy here.
I noticed that it takes twenty-five thousand dollars to heat the police station, but it takes fifty-two thousand dollars for electricity.
It's high and some of the, and the chief has done some work looking at other departments' compatible buildings and it's frightening the same ballpark as for electrical expenses.
My complaint always has been, we built a fourteen-million-dollar building and nobody thought about putting solar panels on the roof. Not too late.
Huh?
It's not too late.
Yeah, it isn't too late.
It is too late.
I feel like we bring this up every year this time. Deb, can we take some steps to see, to look into that?
Into, into look into what?
Into solar panels for the police station.
You cannot put them on this roof because the roof in this building is a thermal-controlled roof and if you put solar panels on and drill through the roof, it will...
There might be smart procedures to have out in the field or somewhere on ground.
What about ground?
Something like that.
Ground-mounted, so...
You just can't put them on the roof.
So I am looking into it. I'm working with a company that came through the listserv for the TAs. I just sent them our electric bill from the police station and they're going to come up with some solutions for me and I have a meeting with them May fourth. So I can let you know the results of that. We're also looking at the, I think I mentioned this before, I did to call the, there's a grant that might be coming out to replace like the roof of the elementary school if you put solar on it. So they're looking at both of those options for me right now. So I'll have some more information. I just haven't discussed it yet because I don't have anything as of right now. But I am already, I am working on both of those options.
Awesome, great. And then just, I mean, this just came to mind. I don't want to throw a wrench or anything, but also I know, you know, we're going to be doing the work in the fire station. Maybe it's the right time to see if we can, you know, put some solar panels there as well.
That's a good idea.
Might not be as much of a need, but...
On the addition, sure.
That makes sense. We can definitely roll that into the construction drawings of the addition.
Yeah, just, you know, I know there's going to be some new mechanical stuff there, you know, chemicals in there, maybe like, just if they have that in mind, might change some decisions, right?
Yeah.
Is this going to be along with the solar panels that were supposed to have gone up on the landfill for the last fifteen years?
So I did look into that. That was done prior to me with the solar panels for the transfer station. The problem is that there's not phase-three electricity up to the transfer station. So most solar companies, they didn't bid on it when it went out for an RFP in the past. I am trying to get the time to rewrite the RFP, to do it again, to see if I can at this point with the new incentives and what's come out, to see if a company would be interested in putting solar panels on the transfer station. So unfortunately, I just, procurement's a lot of work and I'm working really diligently trying to get there.
I understand. But my standpoint is we've been through five town administrators and every one of them has been, it's in the works. We've got people, we're working on it. But it's been basically fifteen years and we have no...
Deb's a planner by nature and I will say that. If someone's saying, if she's saying she's going to do it, she's going to do it. I'm saying that. She's a planner by nature, so if she's saying she's going to do it, she's doing it.
Oh, it's not so much in my mind that's going to happen.
Yeah. We're all interested. I think it's a team effort there, putting some solar up in the transfer station. So we'll keep pushing her as needed and she's going to keep grinding away.
Again, look at town buildings. I mean, I can't believe that there isn't a solar company out there who wouldn't be interested in one-point-one-six million square feet of roofs that we have in town and start looking at the schools and all the rest of this stuff. I can't believe there's a company that wouldn't, it would be a great, I think for a company, it would be a great advertising thing, like we've powered the town.
Yeah. Like I said, I did, I did, I am working with a company right now because, especially since there's potentially a grant that would pay to replace the roof on the elementary school and then put solar on it. It just is huge, right? So that, I am working with them and I did give them the police station. And I did look into the transfer station and there is issues with just putting solar up there. So I will continue to see if there's any way that I can save the town money.
If there's any way I can help, give me a call. I'd be happy to...
If you could write some RFPs, that'd be great.
No problem.
Just have a quick question for property maintenance. Personnel who are adding the part-time...
Sorry. High-time position.
You're adding the part-time position, but we're also increasing overtime in addition to adding a position.
Right, so we have to go outside to get some services done that we need done. We don't have either manpower or the skills. So that person would augment what Tim is doing, our maintenance person now, help us maybe do more things in-house rather than have, go outside. And some of the monies we're spending now is a preventive maintenance, which for us to be, you know, a penny wise and a pound foolish is what's happening. We need these buildings to be brought into some kind of maintenance plans which is going to save us money in the long run. So we're utilizing folks who are working off their tax debt. Maybe if they're, instead of paying taxes, they're helping us. We're having great success in doing that. We're improving some of the buildings. We fixed three roofs recently, which has offset some of the insurance costs we're having as a credit. So we're taking those steps to try to reduce the amount of expense to facilities in the building department. Anything we can get, including solar, will offset that. We'll certainly be open to looking at that.
Reducing outsourcing?
I compare it, when you buy a new car and never change your oil, that's not a good thing. You have to maintenance and provide some preventive maintenance so you can get more out of the car you just bought. So we're trying to get back to a schedule where we have these generators and, you know, water filtration systems, HVAC systems, all things that have to be maintained or else it's going to cost you a lot more in the end and that's what we're trying not to do at this point.
Yes, sir.
We've already actually had that happen in this facility where there was some stuff that wasn't kept up and then there was already work that had to be done on it.
Yeah.
I think that's the history that I'm finding is there was no maintenance done in the last quite a few years. So now we're not only repairing things, but we're creating a maintenance schedule with Nadine and Tim and Carl. Where there's a schedule, everything gets done. But there's that little bit of overlap where it's, we're paying to repair it and now we're paying for the maintenance plan. So it's a little bit painful, but we need to do it.
Some warranties don't exist because we haven't done preventive maintenance on them, so the warranties are going to run out on these equipment. So we have to do those things now.
Yeah, or like, God forbid if someone gets hurt because, you know, something wasn't repaired in a timely manner, you know, and then we have to face a lawsuit. It's going to be a lot more expensive than I think than, you know, taking care of these things.
Thank you.
So no questions for me, I don't know.
It's amazing how much it costs to heat the town library. White library, four thousand dollars.
What?
The white library, I'm just looking at it, four thousand dollars for heating. It's a lot of money.
We're still paying to heat the old police station?
Yeah.
We do, we pay it, but then we bill them and they pay us. So it's in the budget, but we get a revenue on the other side.
Is, Deb, this might be, I didn't see it's in here, but would the pods at COA be included in this budget?
So the pods are a warrant article to purchase them and I included some incidentals in that number so that electrically hooking them up, doing whatever we have to do with them, doing whatever site work we have to do, we'll have the funding to do that if the article passes at town meeting. I don't foresee them increasing any crazy, they have heat pumps in them to heat and cool them, which are the most efficient system you can use. So I don't expect them to skew our numbers crazy. And also the pods have to be ordered and they're going to be nine months out. So it's not something that necessarily will affect next year's budget.
Okay, that makes sense. Just want to make sure we don't, you know...
I know. It's always trying to remember.
That makes a lot of sense.
This is, this is town property earned in service budgets and grounds. Police went from five thousand to twenty-five thousand? It says breakdown. What does that mean?
What does it say?
Says breakdown on it.
Oh, that might be my writing. Do you want to answer this one or do you want me to answer?
So it's the same thing as we talked about preventive maintenance. So because it wasn't done before and now we have to try to keep those programs in place to stop any further deterioration of building. The building's a beautiful building, but it's going to have to be maintained.
No question. It went from, I mean, it went from five thousand to twenty-five thousand.
Because there was nothing in place. We're trying to create a program.
So what you're saying is it's going to cost twenty-five thousand dollars a year to maintain the systems that they have in here?
No, I think because we didn't have those systems in place this year or this projected budget will have to be, will increase to offset some of these costs we have because we had no plan. I don't foresee that price being that high unless something happens in the next budget.
I think what he's saying is...
I mean, what would you estimate, what would you estimate the cost for, I mean, what kind of system? What are we talking about?
So HVAC systems, maintenance program. We get quotes from up to thirty thousand dollars for a yearly maintenance program for the HVAC systems, just in this building here.
Really? Again, it's...
Thanks. Just for reference, we've spent twenty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars to date just on repairs to this building. So based on what we've been seeing, and we just had another repair today to the back gate that was three thousand dollars for the repair.
Three hundred, yeah.
And then there's more work that needs to be done, but I put it off because I think we're going to run over our budget. It's something that can be done. So I actually am the one that said we need to increase that number because we're way off the mark with what we need to do for maintenance and repairs on this building. Because we have to have the sprinkler system tested every year. That's a couple of thousand dollars. The water system needs maintenance and filtration, the filters need to be changed quarterly. That's, I think, about a thousand dollars. The HVAC system, the maintenance plan on changing all the filters and balancing them is fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Then you've got your generators that need maintenance to them and that's not repairs. Those are just paying for the maintenance contracts to maintain the equipment. But when we have a failure, the failure is usually pretty expensive because everything's high-tech. So when the gate broke in the back and they have to have it, it's a three-thousand-dollar repair. They call me. I said, what, I have to say, go ahead and do it and we have to fix it. So unfortunately, it's just an expensive building and it's expensive repairs. And I don't want, like I said, we've already spent twenty-five thousand. That's before the repair that we just authorized today. So we're probably into thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars of repairs into this building this year. So I put twenty-five thousand in for next year just so I, we can pay these main maintenance contracts and try to maintain the equipment so we don't have the failures that cost us so much money.
Yeah, I mean, like, to add to that, right, like, this is a fourteen-million-dollar building, right? So thirty-five thousand is point-two-five percent of the cost, the original cost. I would say that that's probably, that makes sense to me, right, of the maintenance. I'm also surprised it's not more, to be honest with you. I mean...
I think it's just trying to get on...
Things cost a lot of money to keep up. I think anyone owns a boat.
Yeah, we want to get on the maintenance plan so that you treat it like it's your home. You continuously keep up with things so that these big failures and costs don't occur. But just the general maintenance schedule is twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
You put that out to bid, do you?
It's not one contract. The one for the HVAC I have to put out for bid because it's going to be more than ten thousand dollars. But anything under ten thousand, I don't have to put out for bid. So we, you know, but we do usually get three quotes. Nadine has been instrumental in doing that with Carl, taking care of getting the quotes.
And the rest of these, I mean, just thinking about the added cost for the rest of the buildings. I would like to see the number for the schools. It must be...
For the schools?
The schools for maintenance.
Yeah, we can, we can probably share that budget with you.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see that number.
Just to give an example, the water filtration system, because it wasn't properly installed, has created other problems throughout the building. Mixing valves are getting corroded because the water is corroding the pipes and the fittings and so on. So we have to treat...
This building?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah. And everything costs money, but again, not to be a penny wise and a pound foolish, this is a time to fix those systems so we don't have these systemic breakdown of other systems in the building. And I think we've taken steps to do that and so, it just pains of getting there right now to do that.
Yeah. Was there any, in your opinion, was there any way to avoid any of this in the original construction? Look, I know you weren't here.
Right.
But, you know, looking forward, we're looking at an addition to the fire station. I mean, is there any way that those systems can be, I hate to use the word marginalized, but a more simplistic system that requires less maintenance, is that possible?
It's all high-tech. It's, you know, it's called computer-generated. It's high-tech systems and you need specialized people to work on them.
Yeah.
But it keeps going back to the same thing that we talked about. There was stuff, this building was constructed and then stuff wasn't done and everything was kind of left. Oh, it's a new building and it's forgotten about and now we start having these breakdowns. So I think part of that building is, as we do it, is maintaining, doing the maintenance from day one, right?
Coming up with the maintenance program, right from, in fact, I think it's one of the things I asked the OPM to do for us, is to create a maintenance program so that we know, I don't know what, everything, you know, here we just, the sprinkler system, when they were doing the accreditation, they realized it hadn't been inspected because it needs so many annually or, I think annually or biannually, it needed, so it needed inspection and it failed. The jockey pump wasn't working. That was seven thousand dollars to repair it. We had to repair it. The sprinkler system wasn't operational. So I think that going forward, we've learned, we need, definitely need a maintenance program on the day that those, these buildings get their occupancy permit. We need that maintenance program in place and we need to know what it's going to cost and we need the companies to come in and do it. I asked if we could have Tim work on the filters in there and it's extremely high-tech, the HVAC system. It's not your regular boiler that any of us have in our homes. And they do some balancing with humidity. It's all technology and electronic and the regular staff can't fix it, so...
So they got you.
If you will. If you will, um, but we'll definitely be keeping an eye out for that with the
Well, that's about.
Fire station.
My only point was to, you know, make sure that they don't get you, if there's a way around that simplified.
I think it's a totally different build too. So it, it won't have as much technology involved as this building. I don't believe. I'll let you know. You're on the committee. You'll be there with me.
Yeah. So what's the total cost for, just off the top, you had the total cost for electricity for all the town buildings in town?
All the town, but I don't know, I don't know.
Well, it, it seems that, you know, there's a high budget. I mean, every town, I'm sorry, every building is, is R and M and R and M and R and M. And heating and heating and heating. But I mean, um, just generally, what do you think the number is?
Is it right here?
So electricity budget, I have a, a sheet here for, for Lakeville. This is our fiscal year of twenty-one. Uh, in Lakeville, it's twenty-eight thousand dollars electricity. Middle Borough. Thirty-nine thousand.
For the entire town?
This is for, I'm sure, West, Westport, the annual, uh, this is for the, uh, uh, police station like this one, Westport is compatible.
I'm, I'm talking about all buildings.
The whole town. I, I don't have that number for.
I'm just wondering if the off the top you had.
Matt added it up. Uh, the electric budget for all of the town buildings is a hundred and six thousand, two hundred dollars.
That excludes schools, correct?
Yeah, that excludes schools. We don't have any of the schools cost other than what we pay the school, the assessment for the school. That's the only thing in our budget. The thirteen million dollar and change assessment.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, the solar panels for sure pay for themselves. Yeah. Yeah, the payout is right now is about, uh, I think five and a half years.
I'm fine with it.
You know? And, you know, depending on what company you get. Of course, the state and the feds have decided they get their nose in there because they can make some money doing this. They want a cut of everything that you do, even if we did it as a town. It's, uh, it's not like it used to be in the old days. But in the old days, they didn't have the technology they have today and they didn't have the intensity of panels. Today, uh, I believe that a same size panel that ten years ago was two hundred and ninety watts. Right now is seven hundred and fifty watts. So you wouldn't need, and they're flexible, to put them on chimneys. I mean, it's just crazy. But I mean, to do that kind of a job, we're talking about an outlay of cash, is pretty serious money. So if, if your payback is five years, especially in a town like this here, where we have an enormous amount of buildings, my opinion, enormous amount of buildings, that could possibly take that. And especially the landfill and especially the schools. And even the acreage around the schools, there's a tremendous amount of land there that could be utilized for the solar panels. We could actually, instead of paying a bill, we could actually get, getting a credit or getting a check back at some particular point. But like I said, it would take a company that would want to come in and do the entire town and use that as, as essential in advertising scheme or whatever. But it wouldn't matter to us because we'd be getting the benefit of the solar panels, so.
Yeah, sounds great. I, that's a great, do you have anybody that comes to mind or know any of towns? Let us know.
Berkeley's good. I mean, go over to Berkeley, go drive, drive down twenty-four. Landfills, every landfill you drive past is got solar panel.
Have you seen the Dyke in high school?
No, I haven't seen.
Solar panels?
Yeah. Good example. It's the common thing. You just, the price of electricity is going to keep going. It's just going to keep going up. You know, God knows where it's going to end up, but you know, hey, at some particular point. But down the road here, we're talking about the average lifespan of a, of, of, of a panel that's produced today is nineteen and a half years. So, I mean, if your payout is five years, you're getting fifteen years of that benefit, you know, of electricity and probably money. Which would benefit the town. We could actually start looking at other things, those, those monies that we would be spending. Could spend on maintenance and upgrading all of the systems. So that wouldn't, it wouldn't require so much maintenance. There are a lot of pluses here. I'm not a salesman by the way.
You're doing a great job.
All right, are we all set with public buildings?
Yeah, yes.
All right, on to building two forty-one.
Two forty-one, it looks mostly level funded, huh? My, I'll wait with my ladies.
See any big changes in here? What's.
What's the percentage for the increase building commission of PFT? That is you, right, correct?
It is me, yes.
Two percent.
Showing the two percentage.
It's two percent.
Went from seventy-two to eighty? Correct? If I got that number right.
Sorry?
Went from seventy-two thousand to eighty thousand?
No, it went from seventy-eight thousand to eighty thousand, five oh six. You're looking at seventy-two.
I'm looking at two thousand, twenty-three, seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
It was a different commissioner. So when, um, uh, Carl was hired, he was hired at a higher rate at seventy-eight thousand dollars. So his increase is two, two percent.
Okay.
As I requested. And everything else is contractual.
So the building inspector part-time, is it forty-nine thousand, correct?
That's the clerical, that's his assistant.
That, so the part-time commissioner?
It's a part, it says, uh, building inspector part-time salaries wages. And it's got a, I, um, I don't know if those numbers are right. Forty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-two?
No.
That's Nadine, that's Nadine, yeah.
That's Nadine, okay.
Clerical, his assistant in the office, Nadine. It's not an inspector.
Oh, okay. Well, it says building inspector. Again, that's, I'm not.
No, the, it's actually the line below that.
PFT, correct? So it, it's got fifty-two, six, seventy-nine crossed out, forty-eight, three, ten crossed out, and they got forty-nine. So that's, that is, that, that is the staff.
Yes.
Administrative assistant, correct.
So there's only one assistant, right? There's nobody else?
That's correct.
I have one question. So it looks like for twenty twenty-three for the building inspector, like the, the P, so the, the next line down below that one, right? It was budgeted a thousand, it was five thousand, or budgeted again at a thousand. Is there, was there some kind of special, something that happened specifically that you kind of went over budget there? Or I guess my question is, are we budgeting enough there?
Yeah, that was because Jeff left and we didn't have a building inspector. So we had to bring in some inspectors, uh, the part-time inspectors to cover. So that came out of that line. So we still budget some money in case Carl takes a vacation and we'll need someone to cover. But it was, what was it, six weeks or it was two months, I think, we didn't have a building inspector that we were using outside inspectors that came out of that line.
Makes sense. Perfect. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions?
Yeah, gas inspectors went from five thousand to seventy-eight hundred and sixty-five.
Okay, are you all set with building?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Move to gas?
Oh, it's gas, I'm sorry.
Okay. So gas, two forty-two?
Two forty-two, okay. I don't have anything else.
You have a question? Do you have?
No, I, I had a question for gas, but we're, are we still on buildings?
No, I think we're on gas. We moved on to gas.
Okay. But it's, it's, the salaries and wages went from five thousand to seventy-eight hundred.
So it's.
Was that, was, was that a contractual increase?
No, so we have, um, electrical inspectors, gas inspectors, plumbing inspectors, you know, even you're building a house, you call them. So there's a lot of guesstimation involved in how many inspections we're actually going to need. And we did put in an increase because the inspectors are looking for an increase. They get thirty-five dollars per inspection. We are expecting to increase that and that will be before the selectmen sometime in June. When we do, as somebody mentioned earlier, we kind of look at all of those rates that aren't contractual. Um, and determine where, we're talking about forty-five or fifty dollars an inspection. The last time they changed the rate was two thousand and ten, I think. So we're, we're, you know, we were just, Nadine was planning for the increase and not knowing how many inspections we're actually going to have.
The inspections, I mean, those inspections, we're talking about residential or commercial?
Everything.
They're both.
And the fees for that are paid by the people who are being inspected, correct?
They are.
Okay, and that goes what? To, back to the general fund?
Yes.
It does.
Yes, that's local revenues. What?
What would that number be?
Local revenues?
Huh?
Local revenues? Would, would you be able to, Matt?
Yeah.
Can lead a minute, he can tell you, but yes.
You're making him dig deep?
Yeah, I'm just curious. That, the you, you, the, the inspections for gas stations, let's, for example, at the pumps.
They're weight measurements.
I, I think they used to be annually, they may be semi-annually now.
The inspections?
So, so the gas stations are done annually, usually annually, I think. And that's done by weights and measures at state level.
Okay.
So that's not, that's different.
Yeah, that was my next question. I've seen town guys actually at other stations, but I don't think that they would.
We hire in free town. We have the state come out and deal with it. So there might be some people who are certified in towns that do it in their town.
Yeah, they do.
There's only a handful of gas stations in town. So we, we have an outside company that comes in to do this. And I think we actually recently talked about charging, you know, passing the fee back on.
We're, we're gonna pass it, we're gonna start passing that. Right now, we're, we're eating that and we're gonna start, um, passing some of that cost on. For waste measurement in general.
Question I want to have on this, the percentage of increase is huge. Like twenty-five percent?
Yeah, I mean, again, if we don't spend it, it goes back into the general fund. It's just a guesstimation. You never know how many permits you're gonna have, right? I mean.
Okay, no, I mean, that's the answer.
And, and I guess to, to piggyback on what you're saying, if we're gonna bring them from thirty-five dollars inspection to say fifty dollars in inspection. Theoretically, that's going to cover just that, right? That's not even really much of an increase on, for, for, you know, amount of inspections.
It's just when you see that kind of percentage.
Yeah, yeah, it jumps on that, George, I got you.
Building permits in total is eighty thousand.
I'm sorry, what?
Eighty thousand for the building permits?
Revenue.
Totality.
Oh, the revenue.
That, that's both, that's both residential and commercial?
Just everything under the building, plumbing, electrical umbrella.
So it might, it might look like such a big increase, but if you look last year, we budgeted five thousand and so far we've only used twenty-six hundred. So it's, like they said, all of those gas, plumbing and electric are all paid per inspection. So whatever is used is used, but it comes back in the general fund.
Yeah, just, that begs the question, you know, when you see that type of a number jump. Are we done?
All right, anybody else have any issues? You guys are all set?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, well, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
All in favor? And you, we are adjourned as of seven fifty-two.
Uh, I will quick, quick, do they have to do a, a roll call because this whole thing's online?
Yeah, you do need to do roll call, right?
It doesn't, they don't.
We do, but we're in person.
They're in person.
I know, I know, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, that was a good question.
You're not in person. So you guys, so they're two separate committee, I mean, I.
No, it's fine. Okay, we have signatures. Trevor?
All right, so yeah, I'll, I'll hang tight until the signatures are done and then I'll, we'll adjourn. We got it done by my eight P M deadline.
We gotta move it along.
No, I'm just gonna email it to everyone. Seal it.
That's great.
We have to do it. absorb it all.
We have a double position.
It's still in there.
Oh, really? Really?
One of those requirements?
I'm getting solar somewhere.
He was, I was gonna be tired because. There you go. Last one, sir.
Okay, Trevor, well said.
All right, well, first I'd like to thank everyone for their contributions tonight. Um, it was very productive. And with that, I'll turn to motion to adjourn.
Motion made. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loeb?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Have a great night. Thank you.
You too, Trevor. Enjoy dinner.